I call the August 27, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, which happens to be a work session in the quarter. Adam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
This is Lucas Burke.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And I would ask everybody to silence their phones, please. You'll take a moment to do that. And if you need to talk, please go to the foyer. With that, Dr. Patton.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The first presentation this evening, Public Utilities Revenue Bonds. Mr. Kyle Lux, Senior Vice President of Davenport and Company, LLC, will provide a review of the public utilities revenue bond process. The issuance of revenue bonds was approved as part of the FY 2020 budget and will assist in the funding of public utilities capital projects. The second presentation, Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin, will provide a briefing on the recent changes in the Virginia State Code regarding e-scooters and other shared mobility devices. The presentation will include a discussion on the mandate for cities to establish a regulatory or pilot program process on or before January 1, 2020. Failure of municipalities to take action could leave the cities vulnerable to the establishment of unregulated shared mobility activities by providers of these services. Tonight's briefing includes an introduction to the regulatory and operational issues, as well as information collected during staff research activities. There will be another briefing for City Council during the September 23 public work session, which will include detailed recommendations for specific program elements and proposed timelines for the establishment of a pilot program for City Council's consideration. Mr. Lux.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nice to see you all this evening or afternoon. I'm never quite sure, but just a light out at least. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Before we even dig in on the utility revenue bonds, one little piece of good news today. We closed just this morning on the successful pension refinancing bonds. So I think you all were briefed in terms of the results there, but we ended up saving about $9 million as opposed to the $5 million that we talked about when we were here. So we're excited about that and certainly that we hope will be helpful as you kind of manage that over the term. So with that as a little bit of introduction, what we wanted to do this evening was just give you informational item in terms of transitioning from now we've got the general obligation bonds done this spring for CIP-approved projects. We've got the refunding done on the pension side. We're now really shifting our focus quickly to public utility revenue bonds. Within your adopted CIP, you had in the range of $30-plus million of approved revenue bonds to fund the ongoing water and sewer. When we say public utility, obviously, we're talking self-supporting water and sewer. And so what we are recommending and looking to move forward with, and again, informational for you tonight, is an issuance of revenue bonds through the state's Virginia Resources Authority Program. And so we'll talk about that, next steps, and some rationale. But we just want to give you some information tonight. Really, your action will come at your next council meeting in September. So we'll give you that sense. If I've got the right clicker here. There we go. Thank you. Okay. So in terms of an overview, the water and sewer public utility is, as we call it and in the credit markets, longstanding self-supporting component of the city. What that means to us and to the rating agencies is that the users of the system are paying for that system. It's not reliant upon support from the general fund and the general taxes of the city. That's a best practice within the world of running a water and sewer utility. It is very commonplace for you and your peers to be running things that way, and it's the way a water and sewer utility should be run. As we think about all that, one of the reasons that's important, and just to underscore this, you know, after our last couple discussions, that further helps to insulate and protect the general fund's credit ratings. So as we talked about both the general obligation bonds and the pension refunding bonds and how important the city's credit ratings were in that process, having a self-supporting water and sewer utility helps sort of insulate the general fund, if you will, and protect those credit ratings. Again, if we think about the overall sort of financial well-being in the city and not just in one little silo or another. So we just make that point. So the second bullet point here is you're aware, you know, by virtue of your budget and capital planning process, there's substantial utility capital needs on the water and sewer side. It's not unlike any other mature city that has older pipes and equipment, et cetera. Sort of the nature of the beast in that you have to keep up, be replacing those pipes, pump stations, et cetera. And so we're aware of that. You're aware of that. And that's been built into the planning as you work on your budgets. The last couple years, those capital needs have really been funded almost exclusively with existing dollars within the water and sewer capital fund. So it's really been a while, I think it's about 2013 or thereabouts, since the city really borrowed in earnest for water and sewer new money capital projects. And so that's been a good thing in that we've been able to avoid having to just sort of take on new debt related to water and sewer. But as we look at it with your staff, we've really gotten to a point where those capital reserves have been depleted to a point where we need to kind of refresh those and make sure that the water and sewer utility continues to have the reserves it needs to be self-supporting and inflating itself from the general fund. So what we're really talking about this evening is kind of part and parcel with the overall business of running the water and sewer utility, and that's making sure that we've got enough dollars to continue funding the capital needs, whether it be pipe replacement, et cetera, et cetera. So on the next page here, and just a little bit more of an overview, in your capital budget, there's about $38 million of needs identified. Historically, the city has gone and borrowed for water and sewer needs. It's done so with what we call self-supporting general obligation bonds. So when we borrowed the dollars both for the pension refunding and for the general sort of capital improvements back in June, those were done with general obligation bonds. And that's been a longstanding practice of the city. It's worked well for a while, but what we see in today's environment is that given our overall situation in terms of managing the general fund capital program, separate and aside from water and sewer, maintaining the pension obligation bonds, when we layer the utility sort of piece of that on top of it, there's not as much margin for error as we'd like, as your advisor, as we look at your constitutional, kind of your legal debt limit. And so that's one reason that we're talking about shifting how we borrow for water and sewer from what has historically been what we call self-supporting general obligation bonds that are paid for from the utility system and shifting to what we call true revenue bonds that are still paid for from the utility system. The difference is that from the lender's perspective, they now have a tie directly to the utility system and the revenues of that system as opposed to having the general fund kind of backstop the utility borrowing. And so, yes, sir, Mr. Glover.
What protections, if you do that with the revenue bonds, what protections are there for that liability?
Yeah. And so it's a little bit different and very commonplace for a lot of your neighbors. Norfolk's got a revenue credit. Suffolk's got a revenue credit. And what it really means from the lender's perspective is they have a lien only on the revenues of the water and sewer system as opposed to having a pledge of your full faith and credit taxing power. The only thing they get is a lien on the revenues of that system. And so to us, as we manage and think about your overall debt profile, that's a good thing because it helps to insulate the general fund. So we go forward with this and borrow the dollars, can be roughly $30 million plus or minus. At the end of the day, that $30 million, those lenders, if for some reason there's a problem in the future, which we don't expect, can only come back on the water and sewer system and not the general taxing power of the city.
Kyle.
Mr. Mayor.
No, that's a thing.
Given the fact that we have had a longstanding enterprise fund that's been self-sustaining without tax support and given the fact that the bond buyer perceives a higher risk with revenue bonds, what differential in rates, interest rates between the GO bond and the revenue bond do you anticipate?
It's historically been pretty small and especially given how low rates are. As you know, we've kind of seen over this calendar year, overall interest rates being on a very low level. And so what tends to happen there is the difference between, say, our general obligation bonds and our revenue bonds, that difference tends to get compressed. So we don't see a big sort of material difference between the two of them. But it is reasonable to sort of in a normal environment, say, it's probably going to be a couple basis points higher than the general obligation credit, but not materials. We think about the overall debt profile and the impacts of the general fund and some of those things. So it's a good question. And I think the other piece here, and what we're recommending we do, is go through, as I mentioned at the outset, that Virginia Resources Authority. And so what that will get us is, that's a longstanding state program. We've got one loan in there at the moment. Longstanding state-sponsored program. There's lots and lots of bonds outstanding. They've issued on behalf of local governments all across the state. And so what the state basically does, their sort of piece of that program, is they put some backing behind it. And so when the VRA goes out and sells their bonds, they have very high credit ratings. That's what we call AAA/AA split. It's kind of a split to the bond issue. It's a little complex. But basically, from a credit rating standpoint, we're going to get the benefit of the advantage of the fact this VRA program has excellent credit ratings because it's got some state backing behind it.
Do they look for a particular debt service coverage, 1.5? Is that mandated by them?
It is. It is. So we'll get that on a couple pages in. So it's an excellent segue, but we're expecting 1.15.
1.15?
1.15. Yeah. Okay. And I think if we can move on to the next page. Appreciate that. Okay. In terms of a little explanation here, I won't repeat myself or try not to, but so much, but to Councilman Glover's earlier question. So the lender here will get a lien on the revenues of the city's utility system as opposed to the general obligation taxing power. And that's, again, a little bit different for Portsmouth, but not at all unusual for cities around Hampton Roads, across the state, and across the country. It's a very commonplace way to finance a, whether it's water and sewer utility or electric utility or any other kind of utility you can think of. We talked about the net revenue pledge. I think importantly, as we think about that, the first priority within the documents that'll lay this out is operating the system. And so debt service is paid after we operate the system. And so what we talk about here is a net revenue pledge. And what that really means is you look at the overall revenues of the utility system and from likely Mr. Mayor's perspective, the first priority is to make sure that we're able to run the system because ultimately that's what generates the revenue for the bondholder. And the second is to make sure we pay our debt service payments. In any normal situation, we never really have to think about that because, you know, the revenues are certainly going to be sufficient. But I think importantly, to the mayor's point, there will be a contractual obligation, which is typical in a revenue bond issue, that says that at the end of the year, those net revenues need to equal $1.15 for every dollar of debt service. That's what we call a coverage ratio. And so what that does is it builds in, from the lender's perspective, a margin for error in terms of the annual cash flow. So if there's a problem, you get a bad storm, the system shut down for a while, and thus not collecting revenue, there's a margin for error that is sort of automatically built into the revenues of the system.
Bill.
Is that factor unique to Portsmouth or is that standard?
It's pretty standard. And frankly, it's on the low end, meaning from Portsmouth's perspective, more flexible in terms of how VRA typically looks at things. If we were to go do something on our own in the public markets away from VRA, that ratio would likely be higher, which would give us as a city less flexibility in terms of the cash flows. So it is not necessarily unique to Portsmouth. It's pretty typical in terms of how VRA looks at things.
Well, what I'm saying is, unique to Portsmouth, meaning would Suffolk or Hampton, would their coverage rate, if they went to the market, be the same?
It would. So that 1.15 coverage, which is going to be built into those documents, is...
Only if they went through VRA. The market may perceive them to be a higher risk and ask for more coverage?
It could, yeah. And so in Suffolk's specific example, they have that 1.15 coverage built into their documents. So that, I think, to your question, is sort of standardized from a VRA perspective. But to the mayor's point, if we were to go out and do something on our own and our unique circumstances in Portsmouth would dictate what that would need to be relative to what maybe Norfolk does or Suffolk, et cetera. So hopefully, that's helpful in that sense.
Sounds like we should have done this all along.
Well, you get a better interest rate with GO bonds because you're pledging the full faith and credit of the city.
That's right.
And with this, you're only pledging the revenues. So there's a risk as perceived by the bond buyer. And so what the city has done is use the revenues from the system to pay the debt service and take advantage of that lower interest rate. The downside is that...
Exactly.
And so...
And revenue bonds don't.
Yeah. And so, Councilman, your point is well taken in that it hasn't been unusual, especially for cities in this area, to do what you've done historically. And it's worked fine and worked well because you've had the discipline to make sure that the utility system is indeed self-supporting and paying for itself. But I think as we sort of move forward, we know the needs on the general fund side. We know we've got the pension stuff out there. We know there's needs that are significant on the utility side. Our sense was it really is time to kind of transition this to that more formalized revenue bond structure. So is it something you could have done years ago? You could have. You probably didn't need to until we've gotten to this point. Okay. As we move to the next page, again, we've talked a little bit about VRA, the way they operate and how we'll be sort of participating. They've got a couple different programs. But one of them is what they call Pool Financing Program, whereby they take applications from us and from cities and counties and even towns all across the state, and they pool those applications together, those loans together, and they'll go out and do one large bond issue on all of our behalf. We're able to basically tell VRA how we want to structure our loans. We've got a lot of flexibility as we do this. But at the end of the day, they're pooling all this together on our behalf, and so it kind of flows through that state-sponsored entity. They sell bonds in the public credit market, just like we did a couple weeks ago with pension refunding and, you know, earlier in the year with the public improvement bonds. And so the interest rate is ultimately set when they sell those bonds. We'll talk about the schedule coming up. But like another reason we like moving forward with this in the near term is their next planned issuance will have them in the market in about 60 days. And so given the drop we've seen in terms of overall interest rates, we really kind of like getting this done sooner rather than later. And this VRA option is probably our quickest path to being in the marketplace, locking those interest rates, and thus we have that sort of market risk off the table. Mr. Mayor has the dollars to continue the capital program. And so it's another reason we like this option here in the short run. Importantly, the way that Maguire Woods, your bond counsel, which is not us, you know, obviously on the legal side, is going to draft the documents that'll dictate this is going to give us flexibility in the future such that if we decide, for whatever reason, that we don't want to participate in a VRA program, we'd like to do something on our own, the core documents that'll dictate how we do these revenue bonds is going to give us that flexibility. So if we get...
And in those core documents, I assume that if there were a penalty or something for coming out of that particular arrangement, that would be included in the document or something would be disclosed to that effect, right?
That's correct. That's correct. And really, what's designed to be put in there is something whereby so long as we meet certain cash flow thresholds in the future, we basically have the ability to do revenue bonds on our own. VRA signs off on it, as any other lender would. It's called parity debt. So as long as we're meeting those cash flow thresholds, which largely gets back to the coverage ratio side of things, then we've got the flexibility and the ability to choose our options in the future.
What makes this such a desirable moment to utilize this situation?
Yeah. So I think it's a couple different things. One, as the years have kind of ticked by here, you've been able to utilize your existing cash to fund that capital. That's been a good thing, again, since we've been able to sort of delay having to do any new bond issue. But inevitably, with the utility system, you're going to have those needs. We want to make sure we've got enough reserves in there. So we've really reached the point whereby those capital-specific reserves have been depleted, only to make sure there's dollars back in there so Mr. Mayor can keep letting contracts and doing the pipe work and all the various things. So that is a major component of it. And then, secondly, it's sort of happened in some sense to come together that interest rates right now are just about as low as you can conceive. They might go lower, they may go higher. We don't know. But they're just doggone good right now. So I think those two primary factors have been planned for in your budget. And so that's why we're thinking about that. Okay. On the next page, in terms of our next steps. So here tonight, again, this is designed to be informational. Won't take up too much more of your time, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. The action item will be on September 10. So there'll be a public hearing, which is required by virtue of the Public Finance Act, which is, you know, sort of legal authority to issue the bonds. And that'll really be when you'll have the ordinance and the various legal documents that'll say, with your approval, go forth and sell this bond issue. After that, VRA intends to be in the market about October 30. They always reserve the right to move that around a little bit, depending upon the schedule. But for our purposes, that'll really be the day the interest rate is locked in. And so as we think about all that, what we'll be doing, and I failed to mention this on a prior page, is borrowing for $30 million of capital projects. Which we've run those cash flows, worked with staff. That dollar amount is sufficient to kind of keep the system going for a while, but also make sure we can work that in the budget appropriately and meet those coverage ratios that VRA mandate to us. So when we borrow in for $30 million of projects, when we set up this notice of public hearing, we purposely err on the higher side, knowing we can always borrow less and what we will end up borrowing is enough to fund that $30 million and any associated costs thereof. So with October 30, the interest rate's locked in. And then by basically middle November, November 13, the bond issue would close, and that's when the funds would be available to the city to continue spending and working on the capital program. So in essence, that's our summary, and we really will be back here September 10. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Dr. Patton.
I don't have any questions, but I was going to, if I may, and there are no questions for this. I was going to just share something while Mr. Lux was here as it relates to the previous bond sale.
Okay.
Let's see if we have any questions.
That's what I said. We'll wait.
The overhead costs will be cheaper because it's spread over...
That's right. That's right. That's part of the advantage of the pools.
Okay.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you're aware, we went to the bond market for the 2.4 million series of the 2019 general obligation bonds, of which we thought going at this time, we would realize about $5 million. And the discussion from council in whatever we realized would go toward the retirement fund. We did better, and we go back and say at the right timing, than the $5 million when we went out to market. It was actually like 8.1, but we will not get all of that based on the low interest rate at one time. So the city is not realizing today the 8.1 million. That would be spread out over three years. It will be 6.1 in the 19, in the 21 million, and in the 21.1 million. But we will be coming forward, as you all had already determined, to move that 6.1 to and toward the retirement fund.
That's great.
Yes, ma'am. And it was, in some sense, it was a good problem to have and that we intended to target it all towards this fiscal year. And there was literally too many dollars of savings to fit entirely in this fiscal year. So it was a nice problem to have when the numbers, you know, ended up coming out. But I think Dr. Patton makes a great clarification point in that the majority of that will be realized in this year, but there will be some additional in FY '21.
2021.
So, Mr. Lux, I don't mean to be a stickler, but you said $9 million, and Dr. Patton said 8.1 million.
I said what?
8.1 million.
Yeah. In that, Dr. Patton's probably got the right number right there.
Okay. No worries.
Probably rounding too much.
Okay.
And this is the one we got from there.
All right. All the questions. All right. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. All right. We'll ask Mr. Bob Baldwin to come forward with the presentation on e-scooters.
And good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council. As Dr. Patton alluded to in the beginning, this is really an introduction to this topic. We'll be coming back to council on September 23 with a much more involved discussion on this topic. But I wanted to bring you up to speed on kind of what we're dealing with here. So we're going to be discussing, as I referred to, shared mobility devices, which includes e-scooters, electric bicycles or electric-assist bicycles and bike-share programs. And this has been quite a fluid activity that's been going on. When we first started discussing this, we were really talking bike-share programs. And very quickly, everybody sort of evolved and kind of moved beyond bike-share into scooters, naturally become, I think, what most people are talking about. And I think what the General Assembly was getting at back in their 2019 session. So a few things we'll go over them tonight. We'll go over a little bit of discussion on what a shared mobility device is, as I just alluded to. We'll talk about the impact of the state legislation from 2019, another somewhat of a preemption of local authority by the state in this arena. We'll talk about some of the background research we've been doing. We've been at this for quite some time, starting with our bike and pedestrian plan. And we'll talk a little bit about the September 23 work session, where we will talk about these shared mobility device program in detail and include an update on our bike and pedestrian plan, which has been underway for a few months and has a fair amount of information that'll be ultimately rolled into this program as our city's program will evolve. So again, for those of you who have seen these things, what a shared mobility device is, they're a bike or, again, electric-assist bike or a scooter. They're owned by private companies, and they are rented to the public. They're typically operated by a smartphone app. The riders will connect to the different companies using their smartphones for access, using, paying, and then reporting back where they parked the device. They're typically parked in public spaces, not always. They're typically, these days, dockless. In the early days of some of these programs, you would have seen like large bike racks. A city of Norfolk, for example, they originally rolled their bike-share program. They had large bike racks all over. Again, these companies have evolved into more of a dockless system where the bikes have other places they can be located, and people can use their smartphone app to find where bikes are available for them if they're not in a identified location. And they typically are self-locked, and you just can't walk up and take one and start using it. And there's also a term, we won't get too much on tonight, called geo-fencing. And that's the ability to keep the scooters from going outside of your designated boundary where you want them to operate. That technology's been little... That, that technology's a little less than perfect, but, but it is very commonly used. And again, this is typically.
Go, no, go on, finish.
This is typically individualized transportation, used by people for short trips. This isn't like long-term transportation, get on a scooter and riding to, you know, Hampton or something, one of these things. They're typically used for local short trips.
Geo-sensing is what the Beach City Council just enacted?
Right. I think most localities are trying to geo-fence, we've discussed it on ours, that'll keep the scooters from, from being used in other locations.
Kind of like the shopping cart food line.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say.
Yes?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I just returned from Atlanta, and I'm working with our team here, sharing with them the many issues that Atlanta is facing. They've had four fatalities this month, and when we say the geo, bikes are everywhere. They're in people's front yards, they're on sidewalks, wherever the rider stops is where the bike is dropped off. So, you look and you see 15 or 20 just right in front of here, they're everywhere, they have them all through parks, and so, we, in our process, have really got to set out boundaries of what it is that we're going to want, because we will not be able to go out there and get those, pick those scooters up and move them. Once they're here, they're only moved by those who are using them, so we won't be monitoring them. They're everywhere.
And we can mention, as you saw what happened in City of Norfolk, when you had scooters basically showed up during the night and were, you know, deployed all over the city. The city ended up confiscating those scooters.
We had somebody in downtown Portsmouth that came over on the ferry.
I remember that.
They do, they do. The bike share bikes have done that, scooters have done that. I nearly got run over by one on the seawall myself. So, we'll talk quickly, I know the mayor has alluded to this bill the General Assembly passed, and basically what the General Assembly did in this, in this, in the legislation was to allow localities to regulate and establish these regulations, either through a citywide or a demonstration project, or a pilot program, if you want to assess how these things are going to impact your communities. Dr. Patton was just discussing, these things can be fairly impactful. It can, it allows you to require licensing for the operators to make sure you've got a relationship with them, they're not just dropped to you by some company that's in Texas or somewhere. And the one caveat in here, the timeframe, they require you to take action on establishing a pilot program, a demonstration program, or, or a regulatory program by the 1st of January. Otherwise, you give up your right to kind of control your right-of-way, and these companies can show up and then start just running their programs on your, on your property without any local control over it. So, it's really important to stay on, stay on our timeframe here to get through the, through this regulatory process. Now, we've done a fair amount of, of background research, you should have in front of you a, a fairly extensive spreadsheet.
Do you have an extra one?
Yes.
I will tell you, this is a work in progress. Most localities, when they're doing pilot programs, or demonstration projects, or cities like Portsmouth where we're evolving, change in flights over Virginia Beach just recently, banned there from the oceanfront, the scooters were down there, and I described kind of two, two different types of conflicts you can get concerned with. And for those of you who don't know about these scooters, depending how you set the speed on them, they can go up to 20 miles an hour, it's a fast-moving silent kind of a vehicle, we'll describe. So, for example, the one that passed me on the seawall, I was out there walking, there was no one else around me, and that thing shot by me, I didn't hear him coming. Had I taken a step to the left to walk over to the railing, you know, it could have run over me. In a place like Virginia Beach, you've got all sorts of conflict there, you've got a lot of bicycles and everything else on there, it gets a little bit more complicated, because of the pace they can move through a crowd much faster than, than walking. So, localities are taking a look at their own communities and trying to figure out where these things are, are good or not. I think another in Virginia Beach, that they banned them from any road where the speed limit is greater than 25. I know, and we've met with, as part of our background research, you know, we've talked to, and met with localities, Norfolk, Chesapeake, for example, the folks in Chesapeake are very concerned with people riding scooters down like Battlefield Boulevard or something, and mixing in that kind of traffic. So, there's a lot of concerns about that. We've been looking at a lot of other, as you can see on this chart here, this kind of gives you a, a taste of across the state what different localities are doing, and there's a lot of sharing going on amongst the different communities, trying to evolve their programs and finding what's working in some places and what's not working in some places. So, the far column, you'll see, it's listed as a recommended for Portsmouth, that's our initial thoughts on it. We'll come back in September the 23rd in more detail, but as you take this home with you and, and kind of look over this in the leisure, you'll still be able to see some of the things we are suggesting for our future pilot program when we get to that.
Bob, when you look at safety requirements, the helmet, it appears to me that nobody mandates a helmet.
Right.
What, in the far right column, do you say, yes, we're, we're proposing that we mandate it?
Well, you propose, what you propose is that the company provide helmets, which are provided upon request. And I will tell you, for example, we just looked at the pilot program assessment done in Charlottesville, and they did not find one rider with a helmet on.
I've never seen anybody.
These are not, these are not going to be helmeted scooter users, if you have, now bicycle riders, a little bit different, you know, fairly common to see helmets on bicycle riders, but on scooters, it's very, very uncommon, so.
I have two questions. So, in your, in your investigation of, of this, have you seen where any localities have created like HOV lanes, like for cars?
Exactly.
Like specialized lanes just for these scooters?
Right, we'll talk about, when we get to that, I'll answer your question with what localities are doing and how they do the programs, because that's a very, a very good point. And I don't think anybody yet has gone to the point of creating a scooter lane.
Right.
But what they're doing is using bike lanes.
Okay.
And I think that's, that is important, as we work on our bike and pedestrian plan, one of the things you'll look at is, you know, one of the things you may need as far as creating bike lanes is to think about, we're going to put scooters basically in the same lanes with bicycles, we're going to regulate them like bicycles. And so, bike lanes are a place you'd want to put the scooters in there to keep them away from cars, and to keep them off sidewalks.
And the other question was, I'm sure Attorney Ashby has this question, I mean, what's, what's the city's liability with this kind of stuff?
Right. And that's part of what we're working on for your September 23rd. You'll see some, on the back of this spreadsheet, you'll see some localities, the kind of liability insurance, they've been asking the providers to, to carry. That is something we're working with Attorney's Office on this. We come back in, in the September 23rd meeting, we'll have all of those kind of details programmatically laid out. It's a very good point. One of the things about scooters that the people who ride them will find out, they're, because they're small wheels, they are susceptible to flipping over, like if you hit a pothole, and if you flip over, you're likely to hit your head. So, we looked at the Charlottesville post-pilot review they did, and it was a surprising high number of riders who either ended up at the university health services as a university student riding it, or at the university, at the hospitals in Charlottesville from.
Yes, sir. Yes.
One of the things that comes to mind is that you, we don't see people riding scooters. I haven't seen anybody on a scooter today in my driving. However, this new program is, has become so fashionable that I don't know how to ride a scooter, but a perk, the individual just jumps on one because it's out there and it's new, and you take off. And so, to me, that's where the danger lies, there are no boundaries or no practice or anything, you just see it, put your credit card in, and you're gone. So, you're dealing with balance and this, and, and standing in a lane, you won't, I'm going to go wherever I want to go.
So, that's, that's going to be an issue.
That's a good one.
As we indicated, the, the regional planning director meetings, our rare meets with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, this has been a topic, also a lot of shared information from different localities, they're, you know, looking to, to meet the mandate from the General Assembly to have a program in place by the 1st of, of the year. Clearly, as you're describing here, we've identified a large number of issues, both rider and pedestrian safety, people getting hit by someone riding a scooter, people on scooters crashing, flipping over, hitting the handlebars, those types of things. So, we're getting this issue of risk management, liability, and we're looking at all of that. And one of the other ones is Dr. Patton started with her discussion, Atlanta, where you park the devices, and that's both a, a factor of how many do you allow in, and then how do you require them to be deployed when you put them out? We would have that covered in the agreement with the provider. And, and again, I think the way we would set that up is that we found that to be problematic, we would anticipate having a revocation clause in the agreement if they're not following the, the general parameters. They're going to have scooters, I'll just tell you, you're not going to have them all perfectly, you know, functioning, as you just, so you've seen the ones from Norfolk working their way over here, but that's the way we'll regulate that, and the responsibility of the provider to make sure they stay within the program boundaries.
Either Bob or Solomon, can a local government regulate the number that a vendor brings into the community?
Yes, and we are proposing that, and if you look on the sheet there, just go back to what we're going to propose when we get to our pilot program, and when we get to the pilot program, just to let you know, we'll show you in September, we're looking primarily to downtown, really linking the Naval Hospital, the shipyard, and then really from Water Street. We're going to propose keeping them off the seawall.
Yeah, but, what I'm talking about is.
Right.
And you say to one vendor, you only have 200.
Yes, and what we have on our list there, we're going to recommend no more than two vendors, no more than 150 scooters per vendor, no more than 300 total, and that's for your downtown pilot program. You have to have enough to make it.
What are the two vendors right now, the big vendors?
What we're seeing around here locally, we're seeing Lime and Bird, but there are other vendors, some, some communities have up to four.
I asked because some citizens have said to me, we want Lime, which, you know, I don't know what Lime is, but.
How did we derive the 300 number? That seems like a lot.
It can be.
The Old Town area.
Well, we've, we've, what we've done, and that's certainly an adjustable one, if council wants to start at a lower number, what we've done is in our conversations with other communities, and looked at how many they're using to try to figure out what looks like a reasonably deployable number. One of the places we looked at was Alexandria, if you've been to Old Town, Alexandria. I think they've allowed 200, 250 in Old Town, you don't notice them because they're dispersed and smaller, you know, they're not sitting out 50 in a place, or 30 in a place, there are two or three here, two or three there, when you go through the entire part of, of the location, they're spread out pretty well. Council wants to start at a lower number, it's a pilot, so you can start out at a lower number, wherever you're comfortable. We put in a number, we thought that you would get two vendors with enough scooters to make it a reasonable business venture for them to try it, and so, we set that at two vendors at 150. You could certainly go two vendors at 100, two vendors at 75, we think you're going to have to have a reasonable number, trying to follow, again, from talking to other localities, what they've done. Norfolk, I think, has 900 plus in the City of Norfolk out there, so we're certainly not looking at starting off in a pilot that way. And part of the pilot is to determine if the number's too many, do you want to go other places in the city? Again, we'll look at a smaller, a pilot program in a smaller geographic, and we'll get to a little bit of that here in a second, but that's what the pilot program is about, to assess how this impacts, you know, Portsmouth once you have provider show up.
But then our region, the Hampton Roads region, is it only Virginia Beach, Norfolk that have adopted the ordinance system?
I think Williamsburg may have adopted one just recently, but most of the cows are still developing their programs.
And besides the beach, how many have a geo limitation?
They're all geo-fenced at some, at some degree.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two questions. One, is a geo-fence like a dog, no fence or a dog thing?
In theory, yes. Can't go past that point.
It's a, it's a program within the scooter to lock the wheels, lock the wheels. So, most places will geo-fence it, so you can't leave the community. Can't go from Norfolk to Chesapeake on your scooter, it'll lock up, but you can also use it to restrict it in a smaller area. For example, if we didn't want them to take them down to the ferry, we could geo-fence it away from Water Street.
We sure don't want them going towards Churchill Bridge.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I noticed that Norfolk and Virginia Beach, you have to be 18, but Charlottesville, Alexandria, Fairfax, and Richmond, you have to be 14 and under, that's very different.
Children are right.
Yeah, I think that's actually for, it's prohibited 14 and under.
Yeah, it's prohibited.
Oh, it's, oh, okay. So, you have to be over 14 as opposed to over 18.
Over 18.
But, but how would that be regulated? That, and so, when you look at children flying through the streets, and that's what you see.
All right, pause.
What are the positive and negative impacts to the city, operation-wise and financially?
Well, I'll start off with the first part. We have to recognize the fact that you're going to get, you're going to get these things if you have no program, so started assuming we have some program. The positive is, you're going to create mobility for people making short trips to get to places they may not go otherwise. So, you know, someone moving from, say, the Renaissance Hotel, maybe taking a scooter to a, to a restaurant, or to the pavilion, or someone might want to ride over in that fashion, short, short trip, so that's increasing mobility for people to move around without having to drive their cars, that type of thing. Definitely, there's some issues that we'll have to deal with in terms of the liability question about people getting hurt, and that's something I will work with the Attorney's Office to make sure that the companies are covered for all that insurance, in the event there are injuries, people getting hit by cars. Give you another example, like in the, that comes up, and back to, actually, Councilman Glover's question, in Charlottesville, for example, when they have a, a no-riding-on-the-sidewalk sidewalk provision, when they did a survey, most of the scooter, a number of the scooter riders, I think it was 13 or 14 percent, said they preferred to ride on the sidewalks because they found the streets to be too dangerous. So, they're, they're getting up on the sidewalks where they're prohibited because they think it's too dangerous in the road, where the scooters feel most comfortable, in a bike lane. So, the one they would have to look at is providing safe paths through bike lanes as much as you can, so that they can get a place we want to keep them, because we're going to propose keeping them off sidewalks. Sidewalks are dangerous anyway, we've got, for example, on High Street, you've got tree wells, and outdoor dining, and signs, and fire hydrants, and you name it down there, park benches.
Tree roots.
Tree roots, everything down there, a lot of people. And so, we're going to propose to stay off sidewalks, like a bicycle. Again, we'll probably follow most of the bicycle rules in the street, and then the more we can build bike lane facilities, or protected bike lane facilities, that's where the scooter is going to be the most comfortable to go. And again, we're talking pilot program, at some point, you'll have to think about whether or not you want to go farther out than downtown, you want people riding scooters elsewhere, and if you want to go that route, we'll have to do some more assessment. And I'll just mention that as a part of our bike and pedestrian plan, we started with that. One of the initial things in the bike and pedestrian plan is look at, at bike share. We've now evolved them over into looking at, at the scooter program as a citywide assessment that we'll do in our, in our planning process. That plan's due to be completed by the end of next June. So, again, coming back up in the September work session, we'll go into detail on the staff recommendation for this pilot program, I have a map obviously showing the boundaries, and look for a proposed City Council resolution to authorize the program that will meet our January 1st deadline for the program to be adopted. We will look with council at all the regulatory elements we just described, we'll look at making sure that the provider of the service has been properly authorized, licensed, has a business license in the city, those types of things. We'll look at all those risk management liability issues for insurance, and any city code amendments we have to do to get our terminology updated, and Mr. Wright and the Engineering Technical Service Department, they're already working on that, getting the definitions updated within our, because we speak to bicycles, but not to scooters and things in our current city code.
Aren't we talking about a, an ordinance, Solomon, as opposed to a res, resolution?
Mayor, members of City Council, definitely it's going, it's going to be an ordinance, it's going to be a new sector, or a revision of probably our bicycle sector that's going to have to incorporate.
And that's what I was mentioning, you will have code amendments to go with.
Yeah.
The program, we'll also have some policies that'll go with that as well. It's a, it'll be a layered regulatory approach for the pilot program.
And as Mr., if I might, as Mr. Bowlen and I have talked earlier, now is the time to also address things like electric chairs, car, you know, a lot of devices that have been developed over time that we haven't necessarily addressed, but if we're going to address it from the scooter standpoint, now is the time to talk about the medical scooters.
And the golf carts.
Golf, golf carts being some issues and some others.
In fact, I had mentioned it to a couple people, Bob and the city manager, about we, we have some communities that would lend itself to golf cart-approved communities, especially communities that have a lot of senior citizens, and I, I think it's something we need to look into if there's consensus to do that. I think it dovetails into the ordinance that, as the city attorney was. Paul mentioned it.
Good idea.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, one other thing, and, and Mr. Bowlen has talked about geo-fencing, certainly in this analysis, Portsmouth being an older city, we, we do have some interesting sidewalks, we still have cobblestone streets and those sorts of things. Certainly in this analysis, Portsmouth being an older city, we do have some interesting sidewalks. We still have cobblestone streets and those sorts of things. So this may not come out being a, what I would call, a uniform program throughout the city because there are a number of different issues. And as your legal counsel, if someone asks the question, whether or not someone is injured riding on a scooter may be part of concern for the city and part of concern for you riding on that scooter. And so we may have to restrict some areas based on features of the city because we're not a new city. We don't have all concrete poured sidewalks.
So let's say we had to find an area like this. You can actually go within the area and say you can't use A Street.
My suspicion is we're going to need to do some of that.
But we're allowed to do that?
Yeah. Certainly.
We don't set ours anywhere we want.
How about traffic enforcement? Obviously, I don't think anything that's violation here would go against somebody's driving record, or would it?
You don't have that...
Well, we'll have to coordinate with the vehicle ordinance, and I'm sure Councilman Clark is going to tell you about the, what we now term, or the old scooters versus motor vehicles. There was some difference there. But this is really the first time, much like the electric scooters for people riding, this is the first time we're going to coordinate and evaluate the intersection between all these ordinances.
And the reason why I mention that, let's say that someone parks one of these scooters in a handicap park.
Mm-hmm. They're going all over.
I would think that they would be subject to the same penalty as a motorcycle or a four-wheel vehicle.
Wouldn't know who dropped it off.
Get a parking ticket. Get a parking ticket.
You wouldn't know who dropped it off.
Well, that would, I mean, that would be the issue proven who was on it since it's shared. You'd have to get information from the company of who paid the rider and try to determine the rider. But I guess it would be, it could be similar to a civil penalty to the fact that, you know, in essence, I guess the company could be responsible if they can't determine who the rider was. But as far as these things and being on the road, as it stands now supposedly, bicycles and everything on the road is supposed to abide by the traffic laws just by vehicles. And somebody on a bicycle can be issued a summons for disregarding a red light. That doesn't happen. They don't enforce it. But I have seen it happen in the case of an accident where the bicycle ran a red light and a car hit them. They said, "Well, the cars have fought." Well, no, they're not. You were violating the traffic control device.
I was on Granby Street last week in one of these e-scooters. It was literally just weaving out between the cars.
That's what they do.
In what I thought was very dangerous fashion. Let's pause, but let's make sure we got everybody's question or comment.
The kids have a wonderful time with them. They're very reckless, but they have a wonderful time with them.
Well, we'll just go down to the last couple of items here. One of the things we'll do during our pilot program, we will create a citizen survey to ask the public their impressions of how the program is working, what they like and don't like. We will also have a third party, one of our engineering on-call firms will assist us in assessing all these kind of questions about where they're being parked, are people wearing helmets, are they violating traffic, is it on the wrong side of the street, are they riding on the sidewalks? Get a full picture. So we come back to assess the pilot program and want the council to have a broad view of both public comment and technical assessment. Then we're going to talk about our implementation timeframes along that line of making sure that by January the 1st, our program is available for companies to submit their proposals to come in. And then once the pilot program goes into effect, which we would anticipate somewhere around March of next year, we'd have our first scooters kind of deployed. We'll start that pilot program. We'll expect the pilot program to go basically 12 months. And then we'll come back again after that with council, and we'll review the full year of the pilot program and any other recommendations. Whether that be modifying routes, taking out roads, expanding the service. Do you want people to ride on these things in Old Town or Craddock or whatever the case may be? As I said, Norfolk's gone pretty broad with theirs. I think they're citywide with their scooters, not everybody's doing that. Most places are keeping them where they can. Now, one thing, this issue about when, with these places where there are a lot of scooters, you know, within, it's changed a lot over the last couple of years. It used to be very common for these scooter companies, just like the bike share companies, to just come into community and just dump these things all over the place. And so most of the companies are getting more responsible in that because they were getting so much pushback and confiscation of their equipment. So we don't see that quite as much. But in some of these places, you will see thousands of these devices out there. We're talking a few hundred just for us, but you can see some larger cities where they're in the thousands. And so it can be quite an issue. We know a lot of places I've seen, for example, places that have subway systems, like in San Francisco with the BART system, people taking the scooter to the subway and just dropping the scooter on the sidewalk to run to catch the subway. They've had issues of that where people are using that to get them to the next mode of transportation and scooter being kind of left on the sidewalk. So that's the plan for coming back in September. Again, we have your handout for you to look through and kind of see what other people are doing, our general proposals there. We come back and discuss this in September, kind of get some direction from council, how you want this pilot program to be finally structured, either as we have recommended or whatever modifications you want to make. And hopefully, we'll proceed from there to be ready to meet that January deadline for deployment. We will definitely have the program in place before January.
More questions? I have one. This bike share is a bike that is self-propelled by the person riding it.
No. What's in there? You have two different kinds of bicycles. It can be bike share where you're pedaling on your own or electric assist.
We can regulate separate bikes separately.
Certainly, kind of as a bike share, it's a company coming in to do bikes, like a bike share program, regulate that separately. And that's part of our bike and pedestrian plan study, but we'll also have some proposals for council to consider to put, you know, something in place by the January deadline on bike share, and then we'll modify that once our bike and pedestrian plan is finalized.
And we're talking e-scooters now and with the other mobility. Will the Google bikes be a part of this where these bikes, I told you, I just see sitting in parks. I thought somebody, Shoah, I didn't know, I thought somebody had left their bike and found out this is a bike that is here, that you put your credit card in and just take off.
Right, those bike shares, that's what we're talking about. We'll have sort of a preliminary program for bike share.
Right.
Because we need to have something in place because the General Assembly put all of that into this bill. We have to address that. But that's when we'll come back with a more refined, because bikes are a little bit different than these scooters. And we'll look at that once our ultimate plan is done. And again, that plan is due to be completed the end of next June. We'll come back after that with some bike share final recommendations based off the plan.
Because, could we regulate bike rental even before this bill was passed?
I didn't hear the last part. Could we regulate?
Prior to the passage and enactment of this legislation that we're talking about tonight, did we have the authority under state code to regulate bike rental?
I think it would be like any other business, Mayor. So there's a level. Dr. Patton was asking me earlier with regard to economic benefit from the city. I think it's licensure taxes, retail taxes in that format. So I think, as Mr. Baldwin has suggested, it's the regulation of the property, the determination if you, it would be the same thing if you left your car on a city street blocking the road. We can identify you, you may suffer some fine or whatever for obstructing the roadway. So I do think there are elements that we can regulate.
And I will mention again, if you look at that spreadsheet, we have a fee proposal that we're suggesting in there. That would be a $5,000 plus a dollar a day per scooter. One of the findings we're hearing from other localities that are doing it, that you're going to need somebody on the staff to be responsive to citizen complaints, even though the company may have the ultimate responsibility, they may be located in Virginia Beach and slow to respond if you've got scooters showing up in place. So what we're attempting to do is create a funding source in the event we need to have additional staff assigned to work on this. At least in the beginning, most of the programs, you get a fair amount of complaints when you start, and then as you kind of get going, you tend to work down fewer complaints.
Put it in my yard.
But you will get complaints.
Right.
Okay. Good. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Mayor and members of city council, we have eight items on the city manager's report tonight that I'd like to run through quickly. We have increased to loan share, its adoption of an ordinance, accepting a refund of the city's FY 2019 local share payment from the Virginia Department of Health in the amount of $51,321 and appropriating that said amount in the contractual other in the Health Department line item of the FY 2020 general fund budget for the purpose of funding a portion of the city's FY 2020 local share obligation for the operation of the Health Department. The next is a 2019 dam safety flood prevention and protection assistant grant that has been received. It's an adoption of an ordinance. Number one, accepting three grants from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation in the total amount of $50,000 for the performance of a spillway capacity analysis for a late made dam. Number two, appropriating the said $50,000 in the dam upgrades project in the FY 2020 Public Utilities Capital Improvement Program Fund. And three, decreasing the bond proceeds revenue source in the dam upgrade project in the FY 2020 Public Utilities Capital Improvement Fund by $50,000. The next one, which is item 19-31, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'm requesting this item to be deferred tonight until a September meeting of city council.
Well, public hearing for one. We're going to have the public hearing on the night.
Say again, Vlad, why, does that change for this?
Based on, well, what does council want today? You want to consider this tonight or wait until after the public hearing?
Can we, which one are we talking about?
We're talking about 19-312. Want me to read? I didn't read it. Want me to read it, Mayor?
Please read it.
Adoption of an ordinance. One, establishing a new project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund known as the City Hall Relocation Project. And two, appropriating and transferring the sum of $475 in interest savings from the debt service fund balance to the City Hall Relocation Project. This is just to establish the project.
All right, so what's your pleasure?
I mean, we've already taken the steps to move forward on a project. We're going to have a public hearing to talk about places and sizes and we're not having a public hearing to talk about yes or no.
All right, so you're for it.
So why wouldn't we take a vote for this now?
All right.
Well, I think we're kind of curving away from what the public session intent is. This is such a large project that I felt the need for the citizens to share in and be available. So if we would do this then, we're putting the cart before the horse because they will be there to help us make a decision on whether they want this or not because it's, there's just as much involved with this as we are.
I support, I want to head with the ordinance.
I would go ahead with it.
One, two, three.
I need to read it again. I'm a little confused.
Can we read the whole thing?
Yeah, do you? I need you to read it.
The whole thing?
I need you to read it to me, please.
Okay. Adoption of an ordinance. Number one, establishing a new project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund known as the City Hall Relocation Project. And two, appropriating and transferring the sum of $475,000 in interest savings from the debt service fund balance to the City Hall Relocation Project background. In 2018, the city unveiled the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Project with the goals of relocating City Hall and police and fire offices and revitalizing the area surrounding Crawford Street from the roundabout to the Elizabeth River. In May 2018, AHP Development LLC, a subsidiary of Amada Hoffler Properties Incorporated, presented the city with an unsolicited proposal for the construction of a new city hall and a new police and public safety building and a new packed parking garage and the subsequent redevelopment of vacant properties. The city received the proposal in accordance with the Virginia Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act of 2001 as amended, PPEA. As required by the PPEA, the city gave public notice of the receipt of the proposal and invited competitive proposals. One additional proposal was received and subsequently withdrawn. By Resolution R 18-33 adopted on November 27, 2018, city council directed city staff to analyze the AHP proposal. Based on city staff's preliminary analysis, the proposal was deemed worthy of further discussion to determine whether the parties could reach agreement on terms for a binding comprehensive agreement. By Council Resolution R 19-04 adopted on February 26, 2019, city council authorized execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city and AHP outlining general concepts for the potential project. For the last several months, city staff has met on a regular basis with AHP and consultants. On Monday, August 26, 2019, city staff will present the site layout recommendations and conceptual designs for city council consideration discussion. The next steps in the negotiation process is to prepare more detailed plans and specifications so that a reasonable, accurate cost estimate can be obtained for each potential element of the project. Obtaining accurate cost estimates will allow for analysis of the financial feasibility of the project. It is estimated that the cost to obtain more detailed plans and specification will be $200,000 for the new city hall and parking garage and $275,000 for the new police and fire public safety building. I'm not finished. AHP has agreed to incur this expense on the condition that the city agrees to reimburse AHP its actual third-party design costs not to exceed $475,000 in the event that the city selects not to proceed with the project. The city and AHP will execute a reimbursement agreement memorializing these terms. In the event the city elects not to proceed with the project and reimburses AHP, all plans and specifications that have been prepared will become the property of the city. The city has debt service fund balance available to fund the contingent reimbursement. The funds are available because of savings from lower interest expenses than anticipated. The ordinance proposed for council's consideration transfers a portion of the savings to a new capital improvement fund project labeled City Hall Relocation Project. Financial impact.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. So, you know, based on the conversation we had last night, I understand what it says, but I think we blurred the lines a little bit. We just, if there's no negative impact to us from waiting till after we have the public hearing, I would, that would be what I want. I will vote for it.
So that we don't end up with a tie. Can we compromise on this coming back on the 10th?
That's on me.
Which would be the day after the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is the public.
I don't like it, but I'll do it.
Okay.
I don't see any reason not to do what we said we were going to do.
Because the 10th is not going to determine the fate. It's not a yes or a no on the 10th.
So you're saying regardless to what the public, the citizens think, does that matter?
No, I think we have the...
Well, that's what he said.
We have a consensus, though.
Paul, don't put words in my mouth.
No, that's not what I said. So don't sit there and put words in my face, okay?
I said what you said.
All right. Bill and Paul. We've got...
I'm not going to argue with you.
We got the consensus to bring it back on the 10th, okay?
Of course.
All right, Paul.
All right.
Do we have a new subject? Because we got the consensus on this.
All right. I still have more, Mayor.
All right.
Okay. Adoption of legal guardianship incentive payments. Adoption of an ordinance accepting adoption and legal guardianship incentive payment program funding from the Virginia Department of program funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $5,000, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Social Services Fund to encourage and support adoption of legal guardianship. Transfer of the Portsmouth Homeless Errant Coalition, PHAC, Continuum of Care, COA Planning Dollars Grant to the Department of Social Services. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a continuum of care planning grant in the amount of $35,058 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and appropriated said funds in the FY 2020 Grant Fund for use by the Department of Social Services. Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Funds. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $3,300, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Fund. That concludes the City Manager's Report. I do have some report back items to call to your attention. In your box, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, you wanted staff to report back on funding balances. You have in your box the five-page document on the funding balances. You also, from our notes from the meeting, asked that the Public Utilities FY 2019 budget to actual variances were the difference that documented with an explanation in each of those areas is in your box. The item of staff to have the Retirement Board Financial Advisor give briefing to City Council ASAP, that date is pending. We should have the date that they will be coming to you by our next meeting. Staff to develop policy for use of City Council Chamber and video recording of events. The city attorney, the city clerk, the city manager, and our communications director is working, and we're hoping to have that back to you by September 9. And you asked at the last meeting that staff to draft a letter to support position of VML to prohibit firearms in public municipal places. That meeting was on, an ask was on August 13. On August 15, the mayor signed and sent a letter to VML on the behalf of City Council. You had your update on the broadband commission last evening, which was August 26, and to date, we have responded to all your report backs. That concludes my presentation.
All right. City Council ladies on report.
I don't have any others, Tom. Yes. First, Hennessy Road Regional Jail Authority Board Meeting on August 21st. Just some of the updates. He said projecting this year about $603,000 over budget for medical, but we have got a refund of approximately $350,000 through Bon Secours where we were overbilled. We had a situation where individuals were being released, then they were seeking treatment. So the bills were still coming to the regional jail even though they were not housed there. So that's been corrected, and the refund has happened. So that projection puts us currently about $250,000 over budget. The medical report we had for the month of July, we have four individuals receiving dialysis, 48 individuals with HIV, six with AIDS. We had eight individuals try to get a temporary containment order. Seven of them were successful, and they were, you know, sent to another suiting facility. Have 19 pregnant females in the regional facility. Five are receiving opiate treatment for, you know, withdrawal in the narcotics. So they have to be actually taken from the facility every day to get the methadone and transported back to the facility. Have 14 individuals with cancer. One is having chemo, one's on radiation. We have 17 males over the age of 65. We have three females over the age of 65. There are 10 paraplegics. There were seven hospital admissions for over 16 days. There were three that were in excess of 14 days. There were 33 that were transported to the ER. There was 187 off-site visits. When somebody's in the ER, it takes two officers for security. When they're admitted to a room, there's only one officer for security. So that creates an issue for the staffing. There was 20 vacancies. We had 10 officers started this month. There are five expected to start in September. There were 16 that have graduated from the academy since July. And we had maintenance, we had 1,100 transports, work orders, and mental health screenings in July. They have 55 that were screened, and 22 that were eligible to go into the program for the mental health. And anybody that wasn't in the program also gets, they can, they're, get the forensic discharge to try to help them when they get out. They're not just letting them out on the street without some following assistance. So that was it for the regional jail. We also had the school board meeting with liaisons. Vice Mayor Lucas Burks and myself met with the school board liaisons. One of the main topics we discussed was school security, and there's always concerns with that. So we discussed on what can be done and some things to improve it, some things that have been implemented over the past year and how well they work. But a lot of this, we will not go into detail in the public forum because I feel like it's counterproductive. We don't want to know, don't want everybody in the public knowing what our security measures The one thing I want to read here first is, had this letter from Donna Clifton, from the Portsmouth Council of PTAs. Says, she sent it to me and asked me to put this out. It says, "The Portsmouth Council of PTAs is challenging all members of City Council, School Board, Business Owners, Public School Employees, and Citizens of Portsmouth to join the PTA Council in achieving 100% membership in the City of Portsmouth to show the state of national PTA organization that Portsmouth cares about its city and its students. We want to bridge the gap and encourage our families to become more engaged and involved in the success of all students. PTA is the oldest advocacy group for the education, and we want to be the first city to show we are all in. Membership cost is $6 for individual membership to a school, or $165 will get you membership at all 19 schools and membership of the Portsmouth Council of PTAs." And she also had provided applications here if anybody would like one. I already have mine. And I'll read that again. So hopefully, everybody will join me and join the PTA.
501 receipt.
I think you will get a receipt.
Just, I have joined. I'm going to check in.
I joined.
I think City Manager...
I did join.
...in City Hall when she was writing the check.
Right, she came today to pick up. She will pick up.
I mail mine.
Yes.
It's P O Box 3443, 23701.
Okay.
I have one more thing. Another discussion that we had was talking about the committee to do the formula funding. And discussion, Vice Mayor and myself, we discussed, and we were talking about the makeup of the committee. And through our discussions, we thought it was best to not have council members and school board members on the committee, because the committee is going to be reporting back to our two bodies, and I think it might be counterproductive. So that was our decision. So I'll be asking, you know, to have the resolution changed to where we will not be holding those positions on the thing. And I can read it right here for you as it's written. Says, "A resolution amending Resolution R 19-21 adopted on July 9, 2019 regarding the establishment of a committee to develop a proposed school funding formula. Whereas on July 9, 2019, City Council adopted Resolution R 19-21 to establish a committee to develop a proposed school funding formula for consideration by City Council. And whereas, City Council desires to amend Resolution R 19-21 for the purpose of modifying the committee membership. And whereas, the committee membership as amended will continue to include equal representation from the city and Portsmouth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved by Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia that Resolution R 19-21 is hereby amended by substituting the membership list shown on Exhibit A heretofore the membership list shown on Exhibit A to the original resolution. And be it further resolved that except as stated here in Resolution R 19-21 is not otherwise amended and remains in full force and effect adopted by the City Council of City of Portsmouth, Virginia, a meeting held on August 27, 2019."
Council members, when we receive this information, this item was added to your agenda under items submitted by council members, so you wouldn't have to add it to the agenda. It's on your printed agenda.
Good.
Any questions?
That's right. And this comes as a recommendation from you and Lisa?
Yes, that's correct.
Anything?
I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. The following items were approved under the consent agenda. 418 and 1/2 Glasgow Street vinyl siding, porch fan at 428 North Street. Sale was actually denied at 250 Webster Avenue. Sign was approved for 2624 North Street, Detroit Street, I'm sorry. Roof architect grade shingles were approved for 525, 527 Broad Street. 45 Afton signage was approved. And vinyl siding was approved at 435 Maryland Avenue in Port Norfolk. And vinyl windows were approved with conditions at 1038 Crawford Parkway. Also attended the EDA meeting, as did my colleague Elizabeth. I'll let her cover that as well.
Okay, Paul.
The senators for the state of Virginia had a luncheon, and I attended the luncheon where we discussed broadband, and I approached the broadband, and we spoke with Dr. Patton about it, and how they are encouraged that we're going to do real well as a city in the near future because of the broadband, and to make sure that we let them know once the completion of the broadband has been made, because there are a lot of things available for us. They also told us that because of our location strategically, that a lot of businesses will probably be coming to the area. And at this time and space, that we have the opportunity to make Portsmouth one of the most important cities in the entire world area, if not the most important.
Thank you. Economic Development Authority met last week, and they did approve both exterior facade improvement grant and interior build-out grants for two businesses. One, old business in the city, Port Co. on Loudoun Avenue, to do facade work and interior build-out. And then a new business, which I'm sure you'll all be excited about, that's the Bangkok Gardens noodle shop...
Yes.
...which will be in the 200 block of High Street in the former China Garden building. So we got to see the nice architectural renderings of what that's going to be like, and they should be started very soon, since they got that grant. The PPIC met today. Nothing of note to mention there, but I will note in September, the EDA and the PPIC will have their biannual joint meeting. They'll meet together on the 17th of September at 8:00 AM in this room.
Thank you. With that, we conclude our agenda, but we do need a closed meeting. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the city on specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice specifically regarding a conflict waiver request received from outside counsel. And B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Latricia S. Pittman versus City of Portsmouth and Michael I Stockton, Portsmouth Circuit Court case CL 15001798, and Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth case number 19003403, and CL 19003277. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for discussion of assignment, appointment, or salaries of City Council appointees, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Nomas?